Lena.
That took care of it.
Did you find out?
I'm calling to order the Wever City Council meeting of April 27, 2009. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Lena Rotola.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And councilmember Terry Wambel, Karen Berry, and Dean Goke will be absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 13, 2009?
Second.
There's a motion for approval seconded by councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We have several proclamations and ceremonies tonight, so I'll move down to the podium. Our first proclamation tonight is Arbor Day and Tree City USA. I wanted to mention that's the 30 years that the city has been a Tree City USA, but we also have several employees who've been with the city 30 years. I wanted to mention them tonight. We have Mark Cooney, who's up with the police department, so please stand up and we'll give you a round of applause. Congratulations, Mark. Also with the Parks Department tonight, and they'll be working on the Arbor Day and the Tree City USA proclamation, we have Rick Murray, who's been with the city for 30 years, so Rick, please come on up. And we have Dave Kinsler and Keith Wood for the State Forester. And Mrs. Wheatridge will be reading our proclamations tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas trees have always been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of the community of Wheatridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s, and whereas trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens of the city of Wheatridge and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit, and whereas our mature trees are suffering from the devastation of environmental stresses, including insect and disease, winter drought, and severe temperatures, and whereas citizens, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program, and whereas the city of Wheatridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore, I, Jerry DiTullio, mayor of the city of Wheatridge, do hereby declare May 1, 2009, as City of Wheatridge Arbor Day celebration, and encourage all citizens and businesses of Wheatridge to participate in this effort by planting a tree or shrub.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, I would like to talk a little bit about the Arbor Day community events that we have planned this year. Excuse me. Again, this year, we're partnering with, City Wheatridge is partnering with Denver Botanic Gardens and Olinger Crown Hill Mortuary. The first event that we did have was Tuesday, the 14th, last week, and we had a very good turnout with the elected officials and city staff to come out and help plant a tree right outside the wall here. Friday, May 1, we will have, excuse me, a lecture in the pavilion at Olinger Crown Hill, and that will deal mainly with the durable plants of the garden and also discussing the growing popularity of food gardens. Then there will be a discussion, a little bit of going back in time as far as how the city actually got to celebrate 30 years as a Tree City USA. Saturday, we will do a planning over, it's going to be a perennial planning with Peneo Keleitis, who is the Director of Outreach, it's not very easy to say, with the Denver Botanic Gardens, and so that will be Saturday morning. And then our final event will be on Friday, June 5, and that will be with our forestry technician, Dave Kinsler, who will do a tree walk at the Richards Heart Estate. So everybody is welcome. I would like to thank Uli Creative LLC, the ladies that have really kind of steered us to really put the city in the spotlight for its 30-year anniversary. I'd also like to thank the forestry section for all the work that they did, and as well as Margaret Paget and Tony Crocker for all the work they've done in the background. So for further information, there are a lot of different places. Channel 8 should have a crawler on that, and also it's on the city website, Denver Botanic Gardens, and I think the final one is over at Olinger Crown Hill. And finally, they do have a community planning program that they'd like to get off the ground, too, so if anybody has any interest, they'd sure like to have you attend. So with that, I'll ask Keith Wood to come up and make the presentation to the city.
I'm going to break your 30-year plaque here. Thank you, Mayor, and city councilors for the time on the agenda tonight to present City Wheatridge with their 30th Tree City USA Award. It's quite the accomplishment. In the state of Colorado, there are only two other communities ahead of you. That's the city of Fort Collins and Colorado Springs. They have 31 and 32 years, respectively. So you're third out of 95 Tree City USAs in Colorado, so quite the accomplishment. Good job. These guys have a lot to be proud of since they've been here that long, too, and really started the program and have continued it. It's not an automatic renewal. The application does have to be submitted each year to us at the State Forest Service. We check it out, make sure the four standards are there, and then we forward that along to the National Arbor Day Foundation in Nebraska City, who puts their stamp of approval on it and sends back the materials that we present then in the springtime. So we are still looking for those four standards. They're still the same as they have been throughout the years, that these folks are still on staff, that there's somebody in the community in charge of tree planting, tree care. It really starts with the Director of Parks and Recreation, Joyce Manwaring, and then these guys, Rick Murray and Dave Kinsler, that do the work on the ground. The tree ordinance is the second thing that we look at, that that's still in place, enforceable in the community. We look for the Arbor Day observance and the proclamation that was read tonight. Doing a great job teaming up with Crown Hill. I've been over to the last couple of events that Wheatridge has done with Crown Hill for Arbor Day. It's a great educational event. It's been really well-attended, too, so that's good to see. And then the expenditures. It's $2 per capita, so $2 for every person in the city of Wheatridge has to be spent on the tree planting and care program. And I know in these times of tightening budgets and things, the tree programs kind of get looked at, but it's good to see that Wheatridge is continuing that budgeting process for the tree care program. If you think about it, properly planted trees and cared-for trees are one of the only parts of a city's infrastructure that are going to increase in value over time, so it's a good investment investing in our community trees. So appreciate that support and good job. 30 years is a great accomplishment, and I'd like to present this plaque for the Tree City Award to Mayor DiTullio.
Thanks, Keith. What I'd like to do is present this to I'd like to present this plaque to Dave Kinsler. Dave's been here for 30 years. He's been in the trenches working the city and the trees. I'm going to give this to Dave. Congratulations for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And I'll give the plaque or the little trophy here to Rick Murray. He's been in the trenches also. Once again, congratulations to all the employees who've been here 30 years. That was Joyce, Rick, Mark, and Dave. The next proclamation we have tonight is the Celebrate Business in Wheatridge Week, and I'm going to ask Terry Amalfanto to please come on up and Loretta Detero Schwanke. Is Don Seifer here? How about Ryan? Did you want to come up, too? Come on up. And I'll ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please read this. Celebrate Business in Wheatridge Week, April 27 through May 3, 2009. So please come on forward.
Whereas the city of Wheatridge works as a partner with the Wheatridge Business Community, including the Wheatridge Business District, Enterprise Wheatridge, and the Applewood Business Association, and whereas the city of Wheatridge recognizes the contribution that business make to increasing the quality of life in our community, and whereas the city of Wheatridge helps to promote the business community to the public at large, and whereas the city of Wheatridge, Enterprise Wheatridge, and Applewood Business Association will host the Wheatridge Spring Green Business Showcase on April 28 at the Wheatridge Recreation Center from 7:30 to 10:00 a.m., and whereas the public is invited to attend the Wheatridge Spring Green Event to learn more about Wheatridge's dynamic business climate and to help celebrate business in Wheatridge, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of Wheatridge Business Community, now therefore, I, Jerry DiTullio, mayor of the city of Wheatridge, do recognize the week of April 27 through May 3, 2009, as Celebrate Business in Wheatridge Week, and further extend appreciation to our business community for the services they perform and their dedication to the community.
I'd just like to thank the city of Wheatridge for recognizing Enterprise Wheatridge. Thank you.
I would like to thank the city as a member of Wheatridge Business District for supporting Wheatridge Business District, and I'm pleased to announce that the Wheatridge Business District Organization was also awarded some federal funding this year, so I just wanted to let everybody know that we do have funding available for our grant program, which is for facade improvement and signage, and to go on Wheatridge 2020's website, and you'll see a link to us, and you can find out how you can qualify for that money. Thanks for the city.
Thank you. The next proclamation we have is National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 26 through May 2. Is Connie Peterson here? Please step forward.
Whereas 33 million Americans are victims of crime each year, and whereas victims may suffer emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result of crime, and whereas victim assistance and compensation programs across the country provide vital and supportive services for victims that help individuals, families, and communities cope with the impact of crime, and whereas the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, passed by Congress in 1984, affirmed a national commitment to helping victims rebuild their lives by establishing the Crime Victims Fund, a major source of funding for services and compensation to victims of crime throughout the United States, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity for our country to recognize the Victims of Crime Act as a major bedrock of support for victim services and to reaffirm our nation's commitment to addressing the needs of victims of crime, and whereas the city of Wheatridge is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Wheatridge and America to observe the 25th anniversary of VOCA during National Crime Victims Rights Week, now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim the week of April 26 through May 2, 2009, as the City of Wheatridge Crime Victims Rights Week.
I wanted to clarify, it was Carrie Peterson, and Carrie would like to say a few words tonight.
Thank you. As a victim advocate with victim outreach information, I want to tell you, we really appreciate this and what a pleasure it is to be on the team with the Wheatridge Police. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Building Safety Week, and it looks like Ryan Satelski's going to come and accept that proclamation. I'll ask Mrs. Wheatridge to read this. It's May 3 through May 9, 2009.
Whereas through our continuing efforts to address critical safety issues in the built environment that affect our citizens regardless of age or occupation, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound, and whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states, these modern building safety codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters, and whereas the theme, Building Safety Where You Live, Work, and Play, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green and sustainable building, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, and new technologies in the construction industry, it presents appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the place where we live, learn, work, and play are safe, and that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local, state agencies, and whereas the city of Wheatridge Community Development Department strives to ensure a safe and livable built environment for all citizens and businesses, and to do what is possible to ensure that our senior citizens and disabled persons in the community live in safe, well-built, and accessible homes, and now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that May 3 through May 9, 2009, is Building Safety Week in the city of Wheatridge, Colorado.
And I'd just like to thank, on behalf of the Community Development Department and particularly the Building Division, the mayor's and city council's support of helping keep Wheatridge businesses and homes safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Our last proclamation tonight is Mental Health Month, May 2009, and tonight we have Mark Stone and Julie DiTullio to accept the proclamation.
Whereas the state has called for a transformed mental health system in Colorado in which Coloradoans understand that mental health is essential to overall health, such that mental health care is consumer and family-driven. Disparities in mental health services are eliminated, early mental health screening, assessment, and referral to services are common practice, and excellent mental health care is delivered, and whereas mental illness is the leading cause of disability in the United States, resulting in 217 million days of work lost annually due to productivity decline, more than any other chronic condition, and whereas lack of access to mental health services is listed as one of the top five health threats in a 2005 Colorado Health Institute statewide survey, and good mental health is essential to overall health and emotional well-being of Colorado's children, youth, adults, and families, and whereas an estimated 80,000 children, youth, and adults in Colorado who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and that addressing their complex mental health needs is fundamental to the future of Colorado. Now therefore, the mayor and city council for the city of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim May 2009 as Mental Health Month, and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services for all citizens, and making mental health a priority.
And on behalf of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health and the Jefferson Mental Health Foundation, we would like to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council, and as a small token of our appreciation, we're going to be giving each one of you one of these ribbons tonight, and we ask that you wear this during the month of May, and we will be wearing these ribbons in May, to increase awareness and encourage others to embrace our dream. So please join us, wear your ribbon, and expand the dream. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, staff, and clients of Jefferson Center for Mental Health, thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing the importance of mental wellness for our community and helping to raise awareness. Nearly one in five Americans need mental health services each year. When it is detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. We truly value the support of Mayor DiTullio, the Wheatridge City Council issuing the proclamation. The economic downturn has produced an increased number of stressors and problems for families and individuals, resulting in an increased demand for help coping with the emotional strain. During the past six months, Jefferson Center for Mental Health has seen a 40% increase in people seeking help. To respond to this community need, we are dedicating our own resources to launch a temporary program called Jefferson Center Partners. This program will make available quick access to low-cost counseling to any member of our community, including those who have been impacted by this severe economic downturn. You'll be hearing more from us about this in the coming weeks. Jefferson Center for Mental Health is proud to serve as this community's nonprofit mental health center for more than 50 years. With over 300 staff and 40 locations, last year we served over 11,000 people in need. Thank you, City of Wheatridge, for your support in helping us make a difference, especially with your support of our programs in Wheatridge, The Road, Wellness on Wadsworth, and Summit Center. As program coordinator of the Summit Center, I extend a personal invitation to Mayor DiTullio and Julie DiTullio as our honored guests at Summit Center's annual employment banquet, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. on Thursday, July 16. We have a save-the-date card, and Julie has that already. Again, thank you, City of Wheatridge.
Thank you, Mark. We have one more proclamation. Actually, it's ironic that we have Public Service Recognition Week, May 4 through May 10, 2009. I'm going to ask if Mark could please come forward as a 30-year employee, and also Joyce to please come forward as a 30-year employee as we read this proclamation. Joyce, you can't get out of coming in front of the podium tonight. It's great to have employees who've been with the city 30 years. I was just a baby when you were hired.
Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, who supply continuity to our democratic society, and whereas public employees and volunteers make great contributions to their communities by serving in areas such as health, education, crime prevention, fire protection, and conservation, and whereas the public employees of the city of Wheatridge are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of excellence, dedication, creativity, and skills, and whereas the dedicated volunteers of Wheatridge are an integral part of improving the quality of life in our city by being responsive to the needs of citizens and supporting city services, thus making Wheatridge a highly-valued community, and whereas the city of Wheatridge recognizes the dedication and talents of public employees and volunteers, as well as the importance of the services they render at all levels of in government. Now therefore, the mayor and city council for the city of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim May 4 through the 10, 2009, as Public Service Recognition Week in Wheatridge, and call upon all citizens to recognize and express their appreciation for the vital contributions made daily by public employees and volunteers throughout the city of Wheatridge.
Well, I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the city of Wheatridge for 30 years. I thoroughly enjoy what I do, and I'm proud to have worked here with such a great group of employees, elected officials, over the years. So, thank you.
And once again, thank you to Mrs. Wheatridge for reading the proclamations. Move on to public comment. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward for public comment for anything not on the agenda. And please give us your name and spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address.
Hello. My name's Terry Amalfitano. My last name is spelled A-M-A-L-F-I-T-A-N-O. My address in Wheatridge is 7300 West 38th Avenue, Wheatridge, Colorado, 80033. And I am here tonight to thank Wheatridge 2020 and the Wheatridge Business District for a loan and a grant, respectively, towards the redevelopment of our new building at 7300 West 38th Avenue. My husband and I are the owners of Big Sky Espresso Cafe, and we are proud to announce that we will be open for business on Saturday, May 2. That's this Saturday, and we would like to invite the mayor and the councilors and the rest of the citizens of Wheatridge for a free welcome breakfast from May 30 to 11:30 on that day. And we're proud to have our new building open here in Wheatridge, and thanks, and we'll hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak in our public comment tonight?
Hello. My name is Trina Thurman. I live at 4690 Independence Street, Wheatridge, Colorado.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name for the record?
T-H-U-R-M-A-N.
Thanks, Trina.
I'm here to talk about the problem, the issue of cars parking on lawns, and I am experienced this problem in my neighborhood as well. I have a gentleman who has two boats, two RVs, a Pomtoon, or a couple of other cars and trucks strewn across the front of his property. My house was built in 1933. I take pride of ownership in my house, and I'm not asking anyone else in the city of Wheatridge to take pride in of ownership in their house, but I ask that they at least make it presentable. I am suggesting that if the property already has an existing driveway, use that existing driveway. If it does not have an existing driveway, then the homeowner should designate an area for parking only. I don't care if there's grass or dirt, but they need to designate one side or the other for parking. If they run out of vehicles, parking space, then they need to find an alternative place to park their vehicles. It's become unsightly in this neighborhood. We like people moving into our neighborhood. We want people to remain in Wheatridge. We want people to bring their business to Wheatridge. We don't want them to drive straight through because it's a very messy little town, and I would appreciate that you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak in our public comment before we move on? Moving on, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? The agenda will stand as published. Move on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item one is approval of an award. Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce approval of award ITB 0912 Leisure Pool and Spa Refinish to Atlantis Pool Plastering Incorporated in the total amount of $105,763.
Motion's in order.
Okay. I'll do it. I move to approve award ITB 0912 Leisure Pool and Spa Refinish to Atlantis Pool Plastering Incorporated, Texas, in the amount of $105,763 and a contingency amount of $10,600. Period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for approval seconded by councilmember Sang. Discussion on the motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item two is Resolution 24-2009. Councilmember Stites.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Resolution 24-2009, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $14,988 for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Virginia Graham Baker Act to retrofit the outdoor pool drains.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number 24-2009, amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $14,988 for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Virginia Graham Baker Act to retrofit the outdoor pool drains.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by councilmember Langworthy. Mr. Stites.
I just want to point out that this is costing tonight $14,988 for a federal mandate that's unfunded, and there's more and more of these starting to come across. In fact, there's millions and millions of dollars every day. In fact, we could probably settle the budget in a day if we had to, but I just wanted to remind that this is an unfunded mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments from staff? Mr. Young?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak on item number two? Please poll the council on item two. Please poll the council on item two.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution 25-2009. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution 25-2009, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City and County of Denver concerning urban area security initiative grants that allow for the cooperation of local governments to prepare for and enhance the Denver urban area's capacity to prevent, mitigate, respond, and recover from terrorist acts.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-2009, an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City and County of Denver concerning urban area security initiative grants that allow for the cooperation of local governments to prepare for and enhance the Denver urban area's capacity to prevent, mitigate, respond, and recover from terrorist acts.
Second.
You have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Langworthy. Any other discussion from staff? Mr. Young?
Nothing to add this time. Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public to speak on item number three? Please poll the council on item three.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to read a brief statement regarding swine flu awareness. The City of Wheat Ridge is encouraging all residents to be prepared and to become educated about the recent swine flu outbreak. Also, we would like them to take steps to prevent the spread of influenza. You can learn more about this outbreak and prevention strategies by visiting websites of the City of Wheat Ridge, the Jefferson County Department of Public Health, or the Colorado Department of Public Health. You can also call the Colorado Department of Public Health at 1-877-462-2911. I'll repeat that number one more time. This is for the Colorado Department of Public Health. It's 1-877-462-2911 to obtain more information regarding this. While there have been no confirmed cases of this outbreak in Colorado, taking precautionary and preventative steps is important in minimizing the risks associated with this outbreak. The City of Wheat Ridge encourages every resident to have a 72-hour emergency kit stocked and ready to use. If you do not have one, now is a great time to get started. You can visit our website at readycolorado.com. That's ready, R-E-A-D-Y, Colorado, all one word, dot com, to get a detailed description of the contents for a kit. The City of Wheat Ridge has also established links and information on the city's website homepage to assist you in getting information regarding this influenza outbreak. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorneys Matters?
Not tonight. Thanks.
City Clerks Matters?
Oh, just real brief, after returning from the Green Cities Conference, a fantastic conference, an amazing amount of information to be gleaned, and I'm still kind of learning and reading through it since I was out there on my own. There was a lot to get from it, but I just wanted to mention to the council that I would like an opportunity at some time, after I have perhaps a few weeks, to get some things prepared, to share some of the things I learned there and present some of the ideas we might have for sustainability in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. I'd like to make a few announcements tonight. I'm going to read some comments that were done in 2007 about a local business owner, and this local business owner was killed in a fire this weekend in Arvada, and I wanted to just acknowledge him and his family. This is what was read in 2007. This year we present the reinvestment award to Dennis Mantis. Dennis Mantis is the owner of Wheat Ridge Pharmacy located at 6650 West 38th Avenue. During the past few years, Dennis Mantis invested a considerable amount of funds remodeling both the interior and exterior of the Wheat Ridge Pharmacy. Dennis Mantis has also updated and automated equipment to maintain the highest level of service. In these days of big-box commercialism, Dennis Mantis has been able to maintain a loyal clientele, which cites his customer service, personal consultations, and compassion as just some of the reasons he has remained successful. Dennis Mantis is not just a person who invests in his business here in Wheat Ridge, but he also is a person who invests in social capital of the community itself. He supports many local nonprofit organizations by employing their clients, donating to their causes, and by participating in their organizations. Dennis is a member of the Beddys Business Bureau, the Optimist, and the Chamber of Commerce, just to name a few. Dennis is always there for his clients in every hardship, giving prescriptions to people even when sometimes they are unable to pay. That night, to accept the award was the Wheat Ridge Pharmacy Dennis Mantis. I'd like to send our, the City of Wheat Ridge would like to send our condolences to the Mantis family and hope that they know that we're, they are in our prayers. I also wanted to read a comment about Mountain View. There was a story in the Denver Post a couple of weeks ago about Mountain View, and I had spoken to the reporter for about an hour about Mountain View, and then I got some phone calls from citizens of Wheat Ridge, and also in Mountain View, who wanted to know why Wheat Ridge wasn't more covered in this story, because the indication would be that Mountain View could actually annex into the City of Wheat Ridge. So I wanted to read a statement about that discussion. A few weeks back, a reporter called me from the Denver Post and interviewed me for about an hour about the Mountain View annexing to the City of Wheat Ridge. The article can be viewed at the Denver Post website, and was written by Denver Post reporter Allison Sherry. I found it interesting that none of my interview was documented in the Denver Post article. Last fall, Councilmember Lonnie Gold contacted me and stated that Mountain View was interested in discussing the possibility of annexing to the City of Wheat Ridge by a vote of Mountain View residents. I told him that we should discuss all the pros and cons, but that Wheat Ridge was very interested in the proposal. And with that discussion, Mr. Young had contacted Mr. Gold, and that was going to set up a meeting between the two cities. We decided to set up a meeting between the two cities, but we never heard back from Mr. Gold, and now I see that in the article that Mr. Gold is a former member of the City Council. It's disappointing that Mr. Gold and other proactive citizens were stifled before a full and public discussion could be held about the annexation into Wheat Ridge. The City of Wheat Ridge fully acknowledges the history and background of Mountain View, and still would if Mountain View joined Wheat Ridge. There is power in numbers when it comes to leveraging funds and securing federal grants. Mountain View leadership needs to acknowledge that joining Wheat Ridge would deliver better and stronger services to their residents at no extra cost. Wheat Ridge would gain a commercial strip along 44th Avenue and Sheridan Boulevard, and would be able to better service the neighborhoods and businesses. Annexation would create a synergy that has been missing for years between the two entities. Denying the need for annexation due to pride and stubbornness is not good public policy in 2009, and only brings further deterioration to the area. Mountain View had had to return approximately $170,000 to Jefferson County because city leaders in Mountain View could not identify a project that could take advantage of the community development block grant funds from the county. Wheat Ridge is still willing to meet with Mountain View and begin an open and logical discussion about annexation. We hope to hear from Mountain View soon, because the elephant in the room cannot be ignored any longer. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was very saddened by the untimely death of Dennis Mantis that had Wheat Ridge Pharmacy. I think if you ever dealt with Dennis, you knew that he went to bat for you, helped out an awful lot of people trying to get their insurance straightened out, buying drugs. In some cases, I think he even gave some, but I lost a good friend, and the city lost a great businessman, and the people lost a great advocate. Secondly, it's time, again, you need to do a positive thing for your community. Check your neighbors, especially this time of year. See if they need anything. With all the moisture that we've had, I see a lot of weeds popping up. I think you need to take care of your own weeds, but you know, check your neighbors and see if they need help. And most importantly, I can't stress it enough right now, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Rotola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just also want to send my condolences to the Mantis family. It was very, it was a shock to hear that he had passed away. Also, Enterprise Wheat Ridge just want to tell you again, they're having that Green Business Expo tomorrow morning, the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, from 7:30 to 10:00. And check it out. Excuse me. It's free. There's food, there's door prizes, handouts, and more. So please check that out. It's really going to be a great event. And also, try and give to the food banks there in dire need. Anything that you can give monetarily, canwise, otherwise, please do. They really need a lot of help. There's a lot of people out there that need more help now than ever. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang? Councilmember Langworthy?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, we adjourned.